I will call to order the Monday, September 9th meeting of the Verona Common Council. Begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have the roll call. Ms. Lynch, please.
Alder Person Bear.
Here.
Alder Person Diaz.
Here.
Alder Person Doyle.
Here.
Alder Person Manley.
Here.
Alder Person Riki.
Here.
Alder Person Steiner.
Here.
And Alder Person Years.
Here.
And Alder Person McGilvie is absent in excuse this evening.
Thank you Kami. We do have a quorum, so we will proceed with the agenda. Next on the agenda is public comment. If we have anyone from the public that wishes to speak this evening, there should be a sign up sheet at the podium and for our benefit and also for the benefit of those watching at home, if you would please state your name and address, please.
Bob Feller, 983 Hillside Way in Verona. I'm almost lifetime resident of Verona and representing Verona Veterinary Medical Service and Verona Boarding Service. I'm not sure how many of the people in the council and maybe even the developer are aware of what else is at the intersection of Nine Mound Road and Half Mile Road. So I thought I'd briefly, if I could go over, we're a veterinary clinic and Dr. Schultz bought the practice in 1989 right out of vet school from Dr. Lemansky who had been practicing here in Verona since the 1950's. So it's long established Verona business. We do food production animals as well as dogs, cats, and exotics. And he first practiced out of his house on North Main Street when he first started the practice. And then in 1992, built at the intersection of Nine Mound and Half Mile. And in 1995, we put an addition on for boarding animals. And we boarded as many as 76 dogs at one time. We take them out for walks three times a day on leash on our grounds. And we don't oppose the hotel, but we do have some concerns that hopefully will be addressed. At the Plan Commission meeting, we brought up that our mailbox is on the north side of Half Mile Road. And so they said that that had not been brought up before. So whether that's been addressed and wondering, are we going to incur costs for relocating the mailbox? Wondering if there continue to be parking on the south side of Half Mile Road or with the diagonal parking, if that might go away? That's a concern. Wondering if we had expanded parking needs, would diagonally, would diagonal parking be available to us on the south side of Half Mile Road? Not that we're planning on or anything, but wondering if that is a possibility as long as they're having it on the north side. Wondering if the diagonal parking on the north side would be reserved for guests only of the hotel, or if that's public parking along the diagonal lots there? Wondering if they have an overflow plan, if all 91 rooms are full and the staff that they have, and it's, and if it's not all bus riding guests from Epic, there could be a lot of extra cars there. Wondering if that is something that's been considered? Wondered if it's, and we brought up at the Plan Commission meeting as well, and they said it had not been, you know, considered on alternate side parking, if that would be in effect on both, you know, on their side of the road as well. And then wondered if the snow plowed onto the cars that are along the street there. When they plow the snow, it may plow in a whole row of cars there. And if they have a contingency plan for what's going to happen to the snow. So I thank you for the opportunity to address the council tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Feller. And when we get to the, that point on the agenda where we're talking about this issue, that's where we'll address some of those concerns that you had. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Willett, own property in the city of Verona and also I live in the town of Verona. So now you all represent me as the fire district shortly. So we have some of those issues too. I came last meeting and spoke about an appraisal. Many of you were concerned about some of the appraisal things. So rather than try to call you all back, I thought I would update you on that part of it, although far from resolved. The last meeting was on the 26th. The city had their open book meeting on the 27th. I did go there. The commercial appraiser was there at that meeting, which was wonderful. We did have a talk. We didn't really agree to things, but he pointed out some of the things. And he told me that the reason that my numbers were the way they are is because he didn't have back a form, which we didn't have. So we get all of that worked out. So that was on the 27th and I was really happy to talk with him. I did get from him that the businesses in general did not get the increases that I did. So I was really happy. As you all know, I was concerned, the message we were sending to the businesses, apparently it's just me you're picking up. I get past that. On the, so the form that was missing, I sent to him on the 28th. He told me he'd get it back to me in a week. He acknowledged getting it on the 29th. And I know there's been a holiday and I know there's busy things. So I'm sure that he's getting to that and will get back to me shortly and we'll continue with that discussion. Much better with that. The other thing I wanted to talk about a bit is the fire department staffing. As I came to this meeting last week to talk about my appraisal, I listened to a bunch of things about the fire department staffing. Well, not really, about funding the fire department staffing. And I'm really concerned that this gets done right. As I say, I live in the town now. So I guess you guys have some input in that. So I really want it to get done right. There was a citizen here that did a wonderful discussion about the PFC, the meaning of the PFC, and what it was there for and the corruption. Okay. I looked at that and he really did a nice job of that. I won't go into repeating that. As most of you know, I ran for the county board. When I did the interview with the county board, I dealt with unions, of course. Unions want to have little interviews. Unions gave me a little form and this isn't. Most people don't talk about this. We don't want to hear it. You get a little form from the union that says you're never going to lay anybody off while you're in position. I had trouble with that. I wouldn't sign that. In fact, they asked me three times in my interview to sign it. I wouldn't sign it. Okay. What's the union have to do with it? Well, we're dealing with the fire department and the fire department union. So then I looked a little deeper because I need to know and sometimes that's a pest. But we have four new elder persons. Reading financial statements of those four new elder persons, there is between 13 and 22% of your funding came directly from your unions. Now, I need to say one thing. I may be wrong because two of the statements list something as Verona area voters. I can't find what that is. It has the same address as the other two listed as Verona area education foundation. So I made an assumption that that is a union. And if I'm wrong, I'm sorry about that. Wanted to state that because I couldn't find what Verona area voters is. That's a really high percent coming from unions. Are we trying to stall this? I mean, I hope that this has nothing to do with the money you all got from unions. I sincerely do. And I'm not saying it does. I'm saying people watch these kind of things and it's out there. We need to quit stalling. We need to get the fire people hired. We need to give the PFC and the chief the time to do it. Not to keep stalling, not to keep putting it off again and again. Make the decision to fund it because that's the decision that's made, you need to make. That was pointed out nicely at the meeting last, last two weeks ago. And I appreciated that. Please vote to fund that hiring and let's let the PFC get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willett. Is there anyone else in the public that wishes to speak this evening? Anyone else in the public that wishes to speak? Anyone else that wishes to speak? Not seeing any. We will continue with the agenda. Included with your packets were the minutes of the August 26th meeting of the common council. What is your pleasure? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Doyle. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Bear to approve the minutes. Were there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the previous meeting? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And then motion carries and the minutes are approved. Under Mayor's business, we are going to have a report from Brian here shortly. I just, I wanted to mention, I think overall, we had another very, very successful Ironman, the competition here this past weekend. I did, I have to say that I did receive communications from two individuals that talked about some of the traffic and that it was a little bit difficult to get through the city. But overall, I don't think there were any, and I asked the chief earlier, Chief Coughlin, if there were any major issues due to Ironman. And he indicated that there was, was not. So I think we need to keep in mind, you know, that we may have, we may have a little difficulty that, that one day getting through things. But when you see the number of people that are here for weeks in advance of that event and are coming into our city, they are definitely spending some dollars here. You know, I do hear it from time to time that they come in on race day and maybe their, their family and some friends come here and they watch, but they really aren't spending money in the city. But many of these people are here and I see them down at the Fireman's Beach and I see them other places where they're training for, for many weeks in advance of the event. So overall, I mean, I still think that having Ironman here is a very, very positive thing for the city. And again, I did have two people that contacted me regarding the traffic, but I think two people out of, out of everyone in the city is not too bad. So I want to thank the police department and public works and EMS and fire department, everyone that was involved in that and helped on behalf of Ironman. So with that, on the agenda, I did mention at the last meeting that our library had been designated the 2013 Wisconsin Library of the Year. And we thought it would be appropriate if we had have library director Brian Simons come in at this meeting and just talk a little bit about that and give us an update. So Brian, if you would, please.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. It's a great honor for me to, to be here. First of all, for this honor that we were given by the Wisconsin Library Association. So I'd just like to tell you a little bit about what it took for us to get this award. So the award is eligible to any public library in the state. So that's 385 public libraries plus any other type of library. So all the academic and college libraries, any law library, any kind of actual library that there exists in the, in the state is eligible. So to be, to be given this award, it means a lot. It especially means a lot for our staff. They work extremely hard and they really, really deserve this award. The award really should be going to them because they're the ones that are helping our citizens with everything from, you know, the simple requests of, you know, I need a meeting room to very complicated research requests, to storytimes, to programming, to getting exhibits, all these things. So one of the things that the committee that awarded this to us was impressed by was our mission statement, which is, "We build community by bringing a world of knowledge together." And they felt that we really were doing that. We at the library would like to think that we help people who live in Verona not just be people who live in Verona. We like to think we help them become Veronans. We really help create that community fabric and tie the people who live here together to the community. And that's one of the things the committee thought so as well. So the award is, is really for the exemplary service that the library is providing. The specific things that the committee noted were that we, that 85% of Verona's roughly 11,000 residents have library cards. That was fantastic. I mean, it's almost unheard of that you have that high of a percentage. The other thing that was extremely impressive to them were the 84% of our pre-kindergarten through eighth grade students who attend the Verona area school district participate in the summer reading program. That again is another statistic that's just off the charts for local participation. The other, other things that, that were somewhat impressive, which I've, I've given to you as well, the program attendance just has steadily been increasing annually. It's like a 97% increase since 2006. We see 230,000 visitors a year. And we have more than 100, 100 to 120 volunteers ranging from all ages, teens through senior citizens, which again shows you that, how, how the library really is tied into the community. We have 70 teen volunteers over the summer and there's a waiting list. I mean, I've never been in anywhere where I've gotten a few teens to volunteer, much less 70. And we don't beg for them. They come to us. It's, it's pretty cool to, to realize we've had that big of impact in their lives where they want to give back to the community by going through the library. Another thing that they found that was really impressive and allowed us to get this award was the library's commitment to innovative educational, cultural, and enrichment programs, particularly the Thousand Books Before Kindergarten program, which we already have 620 plus children enrolled in. We've had some kids already complete it. And we've, our, our history of being awarded, we have eight now, soon to be nine hopefully, National Endowment for Humanities grant exhibits. We've got another one coming up that, that Alder Years is actually going to be presenting for, which is our Lincoln the Constitution and the Civil War program. And then the last thing was our, our local partnerships, both with Epic and Verona area school district. This year, we're doing a program with the school district that, the, it's a grant through the school district and the kids are, the high school kids are going to be trained to teach the public how to do certain computer and tablet programs and apps. And so it's going to allow us to do some cross generational programming and also some computer instruction. So those are some things that were, that were very impressive to the committee. So, so what now? First of all, we should all be proud of this. I know the library is. I hope the rest of the community is. It's a big honor. And so going forward, you know, what do we do? In order to remain proud for future library services, we do need to continue looking at library service and what the direction is. So one, just real quickly, you know, our services have increased anywhere from 111 to 826% depending on what service throughout the past 10 years. And while we've gotten some staffing increases, they haven't kept at the same rate or pace as the service, the services that have grown. So looking into the future, more staffing is, is not only going to be requested, it's going to be really necessary to keep, keep this level of service at a high, high, high level that Verona expects. Really only from the, the hard work and dedication from our library staff were we really able to win this award because they are performing above and beyond any other library in the state. If, handout that I gave you, if you look at, at the graph on the, the third page, it shows the circulation per our full-time equivalents and compared to other libraries in our, kind of, that do the similar type of business that we do, similar level of business. And we are far and above everything else. I would say if, if we were slightly near that trend line but above it, we would be very efficient. But we're so far above it, it's starting to indicate a, a problem. While we got library of the year, to maintain this and, and sustain it over a period of time is not really possible. We're going to need some more staffing. Similarly, if you look at the next one down, it's, it's staffing levels and we're considerably lower than the trend line would, would indicate where we need to be. Two things going forward that the community has expressed is more storytimes because we are not, even though we offer a high amount of them, we don't have full year weekly storytimes. And to do that, it would require 140 more storytime programs. And then the other thing that people have requested is Sunday hours. Both of those things are going to require more staffing. Again, if you look the last page, there's some graphs. One shows the programs per FTE and it's even more pronounced comparatively to other libraries than, than the circulation per FTE was. Currently, youth services librarians do 240 programs each. So adding any more is just impossible without some additional staffing. And then lastly, just looking at the, at the current FTEs and the FTE need, especially to open Sunday hours, if we continue on the staffing trend, it'll be quite a long time before we're able to open those Sunday hours the community really is looking for. So just to, to take that into consideration. But the main thing is, we really should be proud. Verona should be proud. And then to continue forward, we need to keep looking at, how can we remain proud of our library service? So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Are there any questions or comments, Mr. Steiner?
Very nice presentation, Brian.
Thank you.
Would you explain to us, please, how you use the 100 to 120 adult volunteers in your programming, please?
Yeah, thanks. So the, the volunteers that we use, we use them from, everything from doing what we call the, the pick list. So every day, we get a list of about 300 to 500 titles that need to be pulled off our shelves and sent to other libraries. And we also receive those from other libraries. So it's a very reciprocal relationship. But instead of having staff do that portion, we, we have the ability to use the volunteers to do that. Volunteers also do some of our weeding of, of the garden. They do some of the more simple tasks, the dusting, things like that. They also do, they also help out with the summer storytime and summer, not storytime, summer reading program. And they also help out with some of the adult events. The things that we can't use them for, or sorry, the one other thing we do use them a lot for is repairing materials. So if things come back damaged, be it a CD, we have them resurface that, or a book, we have them re, put it back together, glue pages in, et cetera. But what, things we can't use them for are anything to do with public library patron records. So anything with the holds to give to people. We can't have them work behind the desk. We can't do those kinds of things because of the, the privacy laws in the state statutes. We've looked at trying to use them to shelve items like we do with pages, but it doesn't work. We just don't get enough of their, it's, it's actually an extremely complicated system to shelve at the library because there's about 40 to 45 different classifications. And to know where they all go, it is extremely detail oriented and it takes about two, three weeks to learn for, for someone who is hired. Now, if someone works maybe an hour as a volunteer a week, we would never get them up to speed. So we've looked at trying to do that and it just wasn't, the accuracy wasn't there. Because if a book is misplaced in the library, it's as good as lost until we, we find it through inventory. So, but those are the things that we do use them for. Any other questions?
Mr. Bear?
Well, first, Brian, I want to say, you know, congrats to you and to your staff for, for winning this award and for making the community a much better place to live. I appreciate your charts. You're speaking my language, which is good. And it looks to me like your, your circulation per FTE is about twice as much as the, the trend line.
Correct.
And same for programs per FTE. That's maybe more than twice.
Correct.
And so then the final chart, correct me if I'm wrong, it looks like you would need five more FTEs to get up to what you, what you project you need.
About, well, in 2014, we would need probably closer to seven, if we stayed with where we are now. Yep.
Okay. Thanks.
Other questions or comments? Certainly, and Brian, I mentioned this at, at the meeting two weeks ago, it, it is an honor for, for, for you and for the staff and for the city to have this award. And you know, I'm very supportive of libraries and I,
Yeah.
I'm the president of the Dane County Library Board. So I'm, I'm very supportive. I do just want to caution that, and I would say this publicly and privately to any one of our department heads that, and I know that there's needs at the library. I'm not, I'm not denying that. But when we look at the budget as a city, and we're, and I say this because we're moving into our, our budget cycle right now, that we have to look at the, at the big picture.
Yeah.
And, and we can't just pick out one or two departments. When I see some of the things that are happening in the areas of public safety in and around us, that is of deep concern to me. And when, when people come to Verona, and I've said this over and over, people are probably sick of hearing me say this, mainly they come here because of the schools. Almost everybody that I talk to. That's initially why they come here. But another good reason that they come here and that they stay here is because of, they feel safe in their communities. And we have to make sure that we also provide the dollars to public safety issues. There's calls all the time. I, when, when I see the news reports and I read the State Journal and I see what's going on in Madison, and you know, a lot of people blame that on the economy, but the economy is changing. It's definitely on the upswing. We have to take care of our public safety. We also have to take care of our elderly community. There's a lot of needs in the city. So we need, we need to balance that. And again, I don't want to, to put a damper on, on what happened because this is a great thing for the library. It's a great thing for the city. But we do need to keep in mind that we think of the city as a whole.
Mm-hmm. No, I agree. And I would just say to that, that, you know, if you don't know about it, nothing can be done about it. So,
Yeah, I understand.
You know, that's, that's pretty much where I'm coming from is to present what's needed and the decisions that need to be made need to be made.
Right.
But you can't make the decision unless you're fully informed. So that's kind of where the library is coming from.
Yeah. And I understand that. And we will, we're going to have plenty of,
Oh, yeah.
opportunities as the, as the months go on here to deal with budgets. But you know, and you talk about people having to, to understand and know, and know what's going on out there. We have to live within the levy limits too. We can't just spend whatever we want to spend. So as a city, we have to be disciplined. We have to be responsible. And, and I think when I, when I go back and I, I save every budget. I've saved everyone since I've been on the council. And I can go back and take a look at what we spent every department. And I can say that I'm proud of the additional resources that we have been, that we have put in every department in the city of Verona, whether it's recreation, public safety, library, you know, police and fire. You can go down the list. So it's one of the challenges when you have a community that's growing as quickly as, you know, as we are. And they're, and we've had to do a lot of things over a very short period of time. But I just, I want to caution everyone that we take a look at the city as a whole when it comes to budgeting. I think, Mr. Years, you had your hand up?
I just wanted to also give you a congratulations on, on the awards.
Thank you.
And also just on the growth you have brought to Verona Library over the years. We were talking out in the hall and as a kid in some of those reading programs, the numbers weren't nearly there. And it's, it's amazing to see where it's at. I've seen the kids' growth at the school over the summer through their reading. And also,
Good.
we don't mention enough the city programming that you guys do. And I think that's a wonderful thing for our city. I want to utilize it even more. I'm very excited to be presenting at the Lincoln stuff. And I just also want to point out that our library is one of our shining lights in the city. And I, I do agree with the mayor that we do need to make sure we're looking at the city as a whole and, and public safety is also a concern. But our library is also drawing people into the city. And I hope we can continue on the path that we're on. And I think a lot of that is owed to you and your staff. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Years. Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. That concludes my report, but I did want to make the comment tonight that we are experiencing some difficulties with our air conditioning in this building. It is nothing that we did intentionally at the start of this meeting to try and keep the meeting go a little shorter, but we apologize for that. And it appears that it will not be corrected until sometime tomorrow. So with that, that concludes my report. We'll move on to the administrator's report. Mr. Burns, please.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to provide an update about a few items that are going to be coming up for the city in the coming weeks. First, next Monday, there will be a meeting of the downtown steering committee that'll take place here at City Hall at 4:00 PM. And the consultants from MSA are going to be presenting the draft redevelopment plan and then discussing with the steering committee plans for the next public meeting likely would be looking at sometime in early October. Also, next Monday is going to be a committee of the whole meeting here at City Hall at 6:00 PM to do our budget kickoff session. And I'm working with our finance director on preparing the materials for that meeting. Department budgets are coming in as, as we speak this week. And we wanted to start this meeting to look at some of the big picture and policy issues for the budget as we start working on the recommended budget. Also coming up for the community, Epic will be holding their annual user group meeting. That runs the 15th through the 19th of September this year. Last I heard, they were expecting approximately 8,000 customers to be on site in addition to their employees. So we'll be home to people from all over the country and really all over the world coming in for that event. So welcome to those people that'll be coming to Verona. And city staff, particularly police and public works, have been coordinating closely with Epic to prepare for that event and prepare for, for traffic and, and to make that go as smoothly as possible. Also coming up later this month, on the 25th of September, is the next Dane County Cities and Villages meeting. That meeting will be held in the Village of Oregon at 5:00 PM. And then finally, the border review meeting is scheduled for September 30th at 6:00 PM. And that'll be here at City Hall. And then finally, the border review meeting is scheduled for September 30th at 6:00 P.M., and that'll be here at City Hall. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Are there questions for Mr. Burns? Seeing none, we will move on then to the engineer's report. Mr. Gunlock, please.
Thank you. First item this evening is Liberty Business Park. Contractor did mobilize equipment last week and did some clearing and grubbing. Sanitary sewer construction started today. The contractor's schedule indicates that all work will be substantially completed by November 20th. Next project is Scenic Ridge Phase 5. Contractors completed the sanitary sewer and water main and the majority of the storm sewer. The lift station shop drawings are under review. This project should be completed on or about the 1st of November. Meister Edition Phase 7. Contractor has all utilities, curb and gutter installed. Installed the asphalt binder course last Saturday. The wing walls for the box culvert will be completed this week, as will the concrete sidewalk. Meister Drive will be open to traffic by the end of this week. This will give residents of the Meister Edition direct access to Nine Mount Road. Locust Edition to Cathedral Point. Construction documents for this development have been reviewed and approved. It's anticipated that construction will commence within a week. This development will add 24 single-family lots to Cathedral Point. All work under this phase should be completed by the end of November. Locust Drive reconstruction, along with the work in Cathedral Point and in Scenic Ridge. Locust Drive from the U.S. Highway 18-151 Bridge to Scenic Ridge Drive will be reconstructed yet this fall. The construction documents have been approved. There's a public meeting, our informational meeting, I believe, scheduled for this Wednesday evening. Work will be done under traffic. It's going to be a little, they'll be driving on gravel at times. So, the residents down there are going to have to, have to watch, watch it. But all work will be completed by the end of November. And finally, the U.S. Highway 18-151 off-ramps. Signals will be operational tomorrow. Final landscaping is scheduled for Thursday and removal of traffic control on Friday with the opening of both lanes to traffic. So, around noon on Friday, both lanes, or both of the new off-ramps should be open to traffic. That ends the report for this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Gunlock? Seeing none, thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
We will move on then to committee reports. We'll begin with the Plan Commission. Mr. Years, please.
Or A1, I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution R-13-035, approving a certified map for land division in Hawthorne Hills subdivision. The proposed, oh, do I need a second before I do?
We have a motion by Mr. Years. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ricky. Mr. Years?
The proposed land division would create three new lots from two existing lots to allow for the construction of single-family homes. The proposed lot sizes conform to the zoning ordinance requirements. The Plan Commission did recommend approval of the certified survey map.
Are there questions or comments for Mr. Years? We're just doing some checking, and we want to make sure that we're very open with the Plan Commission. Mr. Years, do you remember there were a number of votes, two votes, I think, that were for three?
This was not one of them.
This was not one of them.
This was a, there was only one person dissenting. And the dissension came from the fact that this is going to be one of the few areas of the city where you'll go from multifamily to single-family. And that'll hold true also for the next item on the agenda.
Thank you. Further questions on the, on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Years?
Under 9A2, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 13-831, approving a zoning map amendment to rezone lots number 66 and 67 of the Hawthorne Hills subdivision from their current classification of mixed residential to community residential.
We have a motion by Mr. Years. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Manley. Mr. Years?
The proposed zoning map amendment is being requested to allow for the construction of single-family homes in the newly divided lots. The rezoning is consistent with other parcels in the area, and the Plan Commission held a public hearing and recommended approval. Like I said, again, this is just like the last one. There was one opponent voting no because of the relationship between single-family and multifamily.
Thank you, Mr. Years. Any questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Years?
Under 9A3, I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution R-13-036, approving a conditional use permit amendment to the Epic Systems Corporation's group development to allow for the construction of a food service building located at 1979 Milky Way.
We have a motion by Mr. Years. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Mr. Years?
The proposed conditional use permit amendment will allow Epic Systems Corporation to construct a 64,000-square-foot two-level food service building. The main level of the structure will be mainly used for food service, while the lower level will be used for food preparation and receiving. Construction of the food service building is anticipated to begin in late 2013, concurrently with the construction of the underground parking structure for Campus 4. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on September 5th and voted to recommend approval of the conditional use permit to Epic's group development.
Are there questions or comments on the motion? Just, I'll make a general comment for the benefit of those watching at home. We're making a lot of decisions here that have a major impact on the city and moving forward. We don't take these decisions lightly. There's been a lot of conversations that have happened at the Plan Commission or at council meetings prior to us taking this vote. So, if it appears we're moving rather quickly on this stuff, it's because the members of the council and members of the Plan Commission have already had an opportunity to comment. Mr. Years?
I would just like to make one comment. We did give one wave, wave one area, and that would be in height. And the requirement is not for necessarily a multi-story reason. There is a pillar-type thing at the very top that exceeds the limit.
Further questions or comments? Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to note that the renderings that were included in the packet, I think, demonstrate a high level of architecture. You look at the materials used, there's a lot of stone, there's a lot of glass. I think, consistent with a lot of the other development that has occurred on the Epic campus. This is, you know, really, for those of us who really want Verona to be the place where we raise the bar in terms of architectural standards and, and construction of high-quality development. I think what's being proposed with this food service building very much is consistent with, with that criteria.
Thank you, Mr. Manley. Mr. Bear?
I want to second that. It's a beautiful building and will be a great addition to the, to the community. And I made a comment in just to Steve before we started that, you know, we have a lot of train stations to nowhere in Wisconsin, but that's, that's okay. It's a beautiful building and an excellent use, and certainly approve and thank them for putting that effort into making it beautiful and good for the community.
Thank you. Mr. Years?
I also want to thank Epic one last time, or probably not the last time, but for how well you work with the public. You guys get to them before I even have a chance to, and, which makes our jobs a lot easier and our neighbors a lot happier. So, I want to thank you for being such great corporate citizens here in Verona.
Further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Years?
Just a note, I didn't vote, I'm abstaining.
Abstaining, okay. We'll let the minutes reflect that. Mr. Diaz, abstained. Mr. Years?
All right. The next item on the agenda is Resolution R-13-037, approving a precise implementation plan for a planned unit development located at 613 West Verona Avenue to allow for the construction of a Fairfield Inn and Suites Hotel.
We have a motion by Mr. Years.
Actually, I did not, I didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I want there, I have some discussion questions before I make a motion.
Go ahead.
Should I give the background now?
Sure.
The applicant has submitted a request for a planned unit development precise implementation plan review. This request is the final step in the planned development process. The developer is proposing to construct a three-story, 91-unit hotel on the property located at the southeast corner of Verona Avenue and Nine Mount Road. The proposed hotel will have one level of underground parking, with the remaining parking being provided on the surface and as dedicated street spaces. The applicant is still working with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation to purchase property and hopes to have the land transfer completed in the near future. The Plan Commission held a required public hearing on September 5th, recommended approval of the precise implementation plan with the following conditions. One, detailed plans for the dumpster enclosure shall be submitted and approved by the Director of Planning and Development prior to occupancy being granted. Two, prior to the issuance of building permits, the property owner shall complete the necessary land transfers with the city and with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. And three, the prior to the insurance of building permits, issuance of building permits, excuse me, the applicant shall enter into an agreement with the city for the use and maintenance of right-of-way along Half Mile Road. And then I wanted to bring up the parking issues on Half Mile Road, which Mr. Feller brought up during public comment. And so, I guess I would start off by asking the police chief, if you wouldn't mind, would alternate side parking be enforced on Half Mile Road?
Looks like Mr. Sarah's going to be responding.
Sure, I can take that question. Both Chief Coughlin and I did speak about this today. And alternate parking, alternate parking on each side of the road in the winter would still be enforced upon this roadway. One of the conversations we had, though, was, if it does become an issue in that area, that's something we'd want to take a look at. But in looking at that road, as you go, as you go east on the road, there is a stormwater retention pond on the north side as well. That is all available for parking in the winter. The second thing, too, is, one of the things the city has to do is still enter into an agreement with the developer regarding the use of that right-of-way. And one of the things that will be discussed with the developer is most likely, who can park there and when. And that's one of those things that, when we go forward with that agreement and ultimately the land transfer, that's something that'll be discussed between the developer and the city that will ultimately have to fall into an agreement. So, I think the parking issue, you know, is partially addressed right now because there is parking out there. It'll be further addressed in the agreement, and I think if it does become an issue, I think the police and myself and the developer are more than happy to sit down and talk about it if issues do come up.
Okay. Mr. Years?
You know, I'm still concerned with a few more, you know, we did give a parking waiver. And I guess I should have asked these questions earlier, so I do fault myself in this regard. But with, will the Fairfield Inn own the 23 street spaces? Or, and is that included in their waiver or not?
Mr. Sarah?
They will not own it. There'll be city right-of-way. So, when, if and when the land transfer occurs, and what we're doing is swapping a piece of city property on the corner of Nine Mount and Verona Avenue with a piece of right-of-way on Half Mile Road, when that goes forward, the agreement is swapping right-of-way. So, what they're in essence are allowed to use, is allowed to use the right-of-way for parking of vehicles at the hotel. So, the city will still own that, and one of the stipulations in the agreement will, can address who can park there. It also will address the maintenance of that area for the snow plowing, and also the maintenance of that area for when pavement becomes an issue in there as well. So, that will all be addressed in the agreement when that land transfer takes place. But the city will ultimately, will remain owner of that once we gain control.
Go ahead, Mr. Years.
And a next question is, is there going to be enough room for two-way traffic on Half Mile Road if we have these spots filled in the, in the angled parking spots as well as on the street, on the, on the other side of the street, on the curb?
Mr. Sarah?
Yes, there'll be sufficient room for it. It does meet the requirements of the ordinance, does meet the requirements of the traffic standards as well. What they're doing with the right-of-way with the parking area is they're expanding the existing roadway to accommodate that angled parking. So, the roadway in that area is going to get larger for the angled parking. So, you won't see a change in the south side of the road, but the north side will just get wider because of the angled parking.
Mr. Years?
Then could you go over how much of the building will have, hey, I'm looking at this map here. How much of the building will have underground parking underneath, beneath it?
Mr. Sarah?
The entire part of the building will have underground parking. So, the entire first floor underneath there will be underground parking, will be, I think, mechanical space, and also be drive lanes for the actual parking itself. So, the entire space under the building will be utilized for underground parking.
And then I guess you mentioned, if parking does become an issue, we can, we can take care of it. What are the steps that can be done to take care of parking issues if they do arise?
Go ahead, Mr. Sarah.
And I think that relates partly to winter, parking, the alternate side parking. That's something that the police chief and I could take a look at, and I think that'd probably take an ordinance amendment possibly. If there was interest, if there was an issue out there in winter on alternate side parking, that's something that could be amended specifically in the ordinance addressing that street. You know, that's probably the cleanest way of doing it. There is ample street parking out there, you know, I would imagine on most nights, it's probably, it's probably empty for the most part. But that's something we could easily address if it were to become a major issue in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Sarah. Mr. Years?
And then my last question, sorry. I would like to address Mr. Feller's question about the mailboxes. I know there was one other person here at our Plan Commission meeting that had the same issue. And I'm just wondering how we can resolve that.
Go ahead, Mr. Sarah.
Sure, and I can hit the rest, there's a couple more questions that I haven't addressed yet, so I'll hit the rest of those, too. So, regarding the mailbox, I did speak with the developer today, and they're more than happy to work with the applicant. Kind of the caveat to that is that sometimes the postal service has requirements that they want you to meet as well. So, I don't, I can't give a direct answer today because ultimately, the U.S. Postal Service has to sign off on where that box is going to be placed. I know the developer said he'd be more than happy to try to accommodate that on that property in some location, ultimately, if the postal service signs off on it. So, the developer does want to work with the individual about that concern. So, hopefully, that will be resolved, you know, in the near future when, once they finally get the layouts done. I know the developer and the applicant, or the applicant, or, excuse me, the developer and the proprietor have spoken already about this. And I, it was a good conversation from what I could tell, and I think that'll be worked out in the near future. Regarding parking, angled parking on the south side of the road, the reason they're doing angled parking on the north side of the road is the developer is the one constructing that. That'd be a city decision. If we decided to angle parking on the south side of the road, the city would have to bear the cost of constructing that. So, that would come down to our street maintenance program and some type of improvements in the future if there was a desire to do that. And Bob, looks like he wants to add something to that.
Yeah, if you add angled parking on the south side of the road, there would have to be additional right-of-way purchased or dedicated by the property owners on the south side. If they wanted, they want an angled parking on the south side, those property owners, they would have to dedicate some right-of-way so it could be done. The CSM that you're going to be taking up here is, for this land swap, there is additional right-of-way north of the existing 66 feet that is being, that is being swapped with the city so that that angled parking does fit behind the curb.
Mr. Sarah?
And I guess one more item I can touch on is the snow plowing. The city will be plowing the, the, the street portion of the actual area. The parking area will be maintained by the developer. So, there'll most likely be a small little swale, not a swale, but just a drainage area in front of the parking that the city will plow up to. The developer will be responsible for the remaining parking spaces out there to plow that.
Mr. Years?
Sorry, before we leave the parking issue, I know I said the one last question. I lied accidentally, though. On those on-street parking spaces, will the public be allowed to use those for any purpose? Like to visit the veterinary office?
Mr. Sarah?
I think that's something that, you know, when the city sits down and creates that agreement, I think we would encourage that. Ultimately, we'd have to talk to the developer about that as well, since they'll be maintaining it. So, I think there could be a balance there. I think within reason, that's probably, probably possible. You know, obviously, what the developer probably doesn't want for their hotel is to have these spaces completely taken up by non-hotel users. But I think we could probably build some language into that agreement that would, would address that.
And that question, I guess, arises, I'm getting a little worried about the parking waiver. If those 23 stalls are taken by non-patrons of the, of the hotel, and the hotel is hopefully busy, will there be enough parking? And if, I mean, can we revisit the parking waiver?
Mr. Sarah?
I think it'd be difficult to revisit the parking waiver. Ultimately, the waiver is kind of what, part of the reason they're moving forward with the project. So, I think you can revisit parking overall in that area. I think you could take a closer look at it. I think you could look at waiving some winter parking restrictions in the area. I know the developer, when I spoke with them today, said they were willing to, you know, look at that and, you know, allow some people in the area to park there. Obviously, like I said, not having the entire parking area taken by non-hotel users. But I think there's a balancing act, and I think they're, they're willing to be good neighbors about it as well. And I think it's just one of those kind of balance. I think it's just one of those kind of balancing situations of providing enough parking but not providing too much parking. And I think the reality with this hotel is they're going to draw a lot of traffic from Epic. They're going to draw a lot of visitors that don't have cars. You know, I think on very few times, it'll be, it won't be overparked. I think if it does become an issue, the hotel could actually look at their employees, where the employees are parking. If it was a special event of some reason and they needed extra parking, the employees could park off-site or elsewhere. It's always an option as well. But I think we do have options available if it does become an issue. But I don't think we could actually go back and look at that waiver, that, for the parking overall. I think that'd be difficult to come back and have that conversation.
Mr. Diaz?
I had a few comments and a question. I just wanted to say, I'm still very much in favor of the waiver for parking. I think we can work, work around any kind of problems that might come up. If it means waiving the winter parking restrictions, I think that's a good thing. I mean, because we don't, once parking spots are built, we don't, we typically don't get them back, and it's going to be pavement forever, and I don't think that's what we want. As I've said repeatedly before, I love shared parking agreements. I think they show cooperation in being good neighbors between businesses, and so I would definitely encourage, and very heartened to hear the developer saying they're open to that. And then I guess my question was, so I'm clear on this. Regarding the mailbox, who would pay the relocation costs if it did have to be moved?
Mr. Sayer?
Short answer, I don't know off the top of my head. I suspect the mailbox is currently in the right-of-way. It's probably not actually on their property. I would have to verify that. Like I said, I know the developer is willing to work with the owner of the mailbox and try to find a solution, and maybe part of the solution the developer would assist in, but that, you know, would ultimately fall upon the developer if he wants to step up. But I'm guessing that mailbox is in the right-of-way. So I don't have a clear answer to your question.
Further questions or comments? At this point, there is not a motion on the table. Mr. Manley? Mr. Years?
At this point, I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution.
We have a motion by Mr. Years. Is there a second?
I do need to make sure that we have, including the three contingencies.
Would you mind reading those again, please, Dale?
Sure. First, detailed plans for dumpster enclosure shall be submitted and approved by the Director of Planning and Development prior to the occupancy being granted. Two, prior to the issuance of building permits, the property owner shall complete the necessary land transfers with the city and the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. And three, prior to the issuance of building permits, the applicant shall enter into an agreement with the city and the use and maintenance of the right-of-way along Half Mile Road.
Thank you. And now, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Bear. Are there questions or comments on the motion? Questions or comments? Mr. Years?
Just for the sake of some of those other businesses and fairness of those businesses nearby, if we could get an answer on the mailbox question to them as soon as we can, this is our second meeting where that question has been brought up, and I know it's, we've all been busy, but if we could get that question answered sooner rather than later, I'd really appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Years. Further questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Years?
Next on our agenda is Resolution R-13-08, approving a certified survey map to create one lot located at 613 West Verona Avenue. The proposed land division will create, oops, I would like to make that motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Years. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Manley. Mr. Years?
The proposed land division will create one new lot located at 613 West Verona Avenue. Once the land transfers are complete, the city and the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, the certified survey map will combine all parcels to create one new lot. The Plan Commission recommended approval of the certified survey map with the following conditions. One, the property owner shall complete the necessary land transfers with the city and the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. And two, the applicant shall enter into an agreement with the city for the use and maintenance of right-of-way along Half Mile Road, and I'd like those contingencies put into my motion.
And, Mr. Manley, you agree with that?
I agree.
All right. They will be included with the motion. I should have caught that right away. Questions or comments on the motion? Questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Years?
Our next agenda item is Resolution, and I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution R-13-039, approving a conditional use permit to allow for the construction of a drive-up window and two outdoor patios at 611 Hometown Circle. And I'd like to put in the condition at this moment with one condition. Prior to the issuance of building permits, the applicant shall submit a revised photometric plan and erosion control plan and stormwater management plan for city staff review and approval.
We have a motion by Mr. Years. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Manley. Mr. Years?
The applicant is proposing to construction, to construct an 8,620-square-foot multi-tenant building with one drive-up window and two outdoor patios at 611 Hometown Circle. Specific tenants for this development have not yet been identified, but the applicant anticipates both retail and food establishments in this building. If approved, the applicant is planned to start construction this fall. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on September 5th and voted to recommend the approval with the condition stated. At this time, I would like to say, this is where the Plan Commission had some division. It was a four-three vote, not necessarily on the proposed development, but on its orientation, the building orientation. Should the orientation be east-west, which has been prescribed by some ordinance, or should it be facing the street? The way the motion has been given and seconded, it would be oriented to the street.
That is correct. And I just thank you for mentioning that. And again, I would agree with what Mr. Years said, that the reason was not against the building, the appearance or anything like that. It was the east-west orientation, that if that's what's on the books, then either we should change that or we should require them to do the east-west orientation. Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I guess, I was going to ask a question of staff, and I still want to do that, but because Mr. Years and you mentioned this question about the orientation of the building, this is something that we struggled with when I was on Plan Commission, when we deal with, you know, the review of buildings along Verona Avenue, because Verona Avenue does not run through east and west. And I guess, from my perspective, orienting buildings to the street makes the most sense, and I'm open to looking at the ordinance, which I think is probably a topic for another time. And I'm not just saying that because we don't have air conditioning in the building tonight. But I think what's before us is a nice-looking building, and I, for one, am happy to see further development along our Verona Avenue corridor. I do have a question for staff, and that relates to the contingency that was approved by the Plan Commission, and that's part of the motion tonight. Can you talk about what exactly will be required of the applicant and who the applicant comes back to with that information, and what the process will be from the city's standpoint, once that information has been given to the city? Does it come back to the Plan Commission? Does it come back to this body, or does it just come back to you for review?
Mr. Sayer, if you would, please?
The photometric plan was reviewed by myself, so that review would be completed by me. The developer is aware that they have to submit a revised photometric plan. They're comfortable with that. Regarding the erosion control and stormwater management permits, they're utilizing underground storage. They've done most of the calculations. They've done most of the homework. The city engineer and I have spoke. The city engineer will have to approve that ultimately. The developer is aware that he has to do that. They're comfortable with that. They knew that there could be some, obviously, some hiccups, you know, with the tight vote at Plan Commission, so they have a little more to complete, and they're a little cautious on completing the final legwork due to cost. But obviously, if it does get approval, they're going to, one of the first things they'll be doing is submitting to the city engineer for approval. I know they've already inquired with the city building inspector about pulling some permits as well. So the approvals will just go through staff. It would go pretty quickly, too.
Thank you. Mr. Manley?
Thank you. And if I could just follow up. So in terms of this body's review of this plan and this project, this is the last stop in the review process?
Mr. Sayer?
Ultimately, from a procedure standpoint, from a council standpoint, Plan Commission, yes, it would not go back...